Okay, six thirty, I'm gonna call to order the Culver Town Council meeting for Tuesday, November twenty second, twenty twenty-two. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clevenger?
Here.
Mr. Giffens?
Here.
Mr. Ham?
Here.
Mr. West?
Off the air for the blade.
We declare the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, united in this one, with liberty, justice, and freedom of speech.
I need approval for the council minutes of October twenty-fifth and November ninth. Oh. Yes, this meeting is being recorded and participation in the meeting means that you're consent to be recorded and to the rebroadcast of the recorded meeting. And the recorded meeting will be up later on our YouTube channel. Also, people online, people in the room at this time, please mute your cell phones. Thanks, Rich. Need approval for the council minutes of October twenty-fifth and November the ninth.
So much.
Motion made and seconded to approve the council minutes for October twenty-fifth and November nine. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, same sign. Motion carries. Um, no great deny. No great killed the right now.
Yeah.
Okay. Next will be the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-two day zero zero eight. Changes to the zoning in ordinance. Even though we did this last time, we
Jumped the gun.
Jumped the gun a little bit, but it has been approved on the first read, but we're gonna need to reopen the public hearing.
I move we open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-two zero zero eight.
Second. Motion made and seconded to open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-two day zero zero eight. Changes in the zoning ordinance. Callers in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Any comments? Oh, we've got a sign-in sheet for the public hearing. Please sign in and anyone has any comments either in the room or online, you're online, please state your name and address. Hearing none online. Is there anyone in the room comment on the zoning ordinance? Second. Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-two day zero zero eight. Callers in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two day zero zero eight changes in the zoning ordinance on second reading?
I'll move.
The second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve on second reading ordinance twenty twenty-two day zero zero eight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
I move that we suspend the rules and because the United of spoken first and second readings that we pass the ordinance on this third and if this third meeting.
The second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two day zero zero eight. Changes in the zoning ordinance on third read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Next is the first reading on ordinance twenty twenty-two day zero zero nine, twenty twenty-three salary ordinance. Any questions? Anyone on council about it? Rich, you okay? Yeah. Motion has been made to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two day zero zero nine on the first reading. The second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign. Motion carries. We're gonna let it sit for two weeks and come back on the tenth.
Should you describe, I mean, was it a percentage, a dollar figure in general as opposed, I mean?
It'll be posted and people will
Okay, they have a chance to take a look at it.
Yeah, it's basically three weeks, two and a half weeks now.
Okay.
But to your point, it's not just a percentage. It was done based on departments and keep trying to be fair and equitable with other departments in the area. So it's not just a certain dollar amount or a certain percentage across the board individually. So it will be posted.
And it was done, keep it in mind, it's difficult to keep employees and inflation and everything else.
Yeah, it's easier competitive.
Even a competitive.
Competitive, that was, that was a big issue with all the department.
I understand that.
I mean, you guys saw it at the county and
See it everywhere.
And this is just not a one-time fix. It's gonna happen probably this way over the next couple, two to three years.
We had several sessions that were
That's right.
Budget where we talked about detail almost every position.
Good.
Thank you.
I just
No, I agree.
Throw it out there.
And if anybody in the room wants a copy, you know, it'll be on the website, won't it?
It'll be posted after it's passed, but I can put it like that.
Well, or it's coming in to get a copy. Like I said, we're gonna pick it up again in a moment on December the tenth. Town manager report.
Um, starting with the upcoming dates, just to remind you that I'm out on the thirteenth for sibling surgery, maybe on the eleventh as well. I'm just trying to play here to see how that goes. Under building commissioner, you just passed the second, third read of the ordinance that we had. I didn't want you to know that I've met with Ty Adley and talked to him about whether or not to move whole permitting with him or whether or not to replace Chuck's position with a new hire. And I think we're leaning toward replacing Chuck, and that's just getting feedback from BZA and plan commission as well. On maintaining local control is important to members of both of those boards. So I will likely request that we put out an advertisement first of the year to look for replacing Chuck's position. And hopefully by then, between myself, Ty Adley and Lori at the county building, I've kind of been working on putting together some training material for that position. They have offered to help us with training, and I think that's really important because the workflow that these permits go through is convoluted. And the system is something, it's taken me three months just to learn some of the basic permitting. So we'll have that replacement person spend time up there. Just as an FYI, I gave a report to the plan commission and the BZA. We've done, last quarter, we did seventy-eight permits in Culver with over forty-one million of improvements and projects, many of which are on the lake. Some of those are Culver academies. They did forty-plus roof permits alone on the properties that they own. So we are processing a lot of permits. And this coming December, normally we don't have a lot of cases, but we will have several plan commission cases. We have three BZA cases. We have three plan commission cases lined up for January already. So people are getting their plans together to do their construction in the spring and summer. So I suspect that won't slow down a whole lot. And then we've also, of course, had to catch up on numerous TRC meetings and schedule some of these BZA meetings as well. So I think we're getting caught up, but just when I think we do, we get new applications in. So that's how that's going. Under utility street department updates, as I noted in the town manager report, we would like to have approval to hire Jerry Sider into the police street department position at a rate that's within the current salary ordinance. And I'm not talking about the one you just passed on first read. I'm talking about the twenty twenty-two ordinance. We'd like for him to start November twenty-seventh, and we're pretty excited because Jerry is also a volunteer firefighter with a lot of very good experience for what we were looking for. So interviewed very well, and we're pretty thrilled to get him on board.
Motion approved Jerry Sider.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve Jerry Sider for the street utility department. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Lake Macs Phase Three, I presented at the county commissioner meeting to get approval to work in the right of way on Sycamore Road. They've approved that with Jason Peters' final review. We're going to look at low case utilities on that stretch of road. It's a pretty small stretch that kind of butts up next to the facility buildings there at the academy and stops at sixteen B, I think, is the road that we stop at. So
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Why don't I keep on calling it sixteen?
Well, you were gonna go up to sixteen C.
Well, that's true. But anyway, so they've given that approval. We will next work on getting easements from the academy through the end-up process. Environmental's still going on with that project. State Clayton Jefferson Trail coincides with the Lake Macs Phase Three. There's no changes on that. Midwestern is not started yet on the north end of town. Bob has had communication with them, so we'll keep your appraised on how that project goes. The peerless proposal for cleaning the well, this changed on the TM report since I sent it to you yesterday. Bob has confirmed that the replacement repair of that will stay within the original approved motion that you guys made a couple meetings ago. So we don't have to add any additional cost to that, thankfully. VS engineering proposal for the community crossing grant application that we did, NDOT has not announced those winners yet, so hopefully we'll hear sometime soon, I'm guessing in the next couple of weeks, if it's like they did it last year. Park Crossroads Stellar Project, the status hasn't really changed. The last time we all met, Amber, myself, and Bob met with the Troyer Group as well as the contractor on site, and you guys, we talked to you guys about that additional piece of concrete that we're gonna put next to the, where we park our our big equipment so that we don't tear up the grass in that area. No new changes outside of that. Under my updates, the comprehensive plan, we are still working comprehensive plan with Donnie from MACOG. Our next meeting will be coming up probably in January. I think we'll skip December because it falls on Christmas week. I did request, after going forward here at our last meeting, I've requested that discovery report. They have sent me a source file so that we can edit it. They do all of their stuff in InDesign, which we don't carry here. I have a copy of it at home, so we could either do it in Word or InDesign, and I asked him to send it in Word so that we can get that out to the public. Interestingly, I had some hard copy of that survey come in just this week, so their report is as of a few weeks back when we kind of realized we had most people who was gonna fill it out, fill it out. So you'll see an executive summary type of report of those results, and I'll get those to you guys before we put it out to the public. Merchants Association meeting, we had another round of meetings. I think they're going really well. Amber invited some more people to that table. We had several people show up for our last meeting. Visitor Center, Develop Culver, The Chamber, and several of the downtown merchants are attending that. And mainly, they're still looking at a couple of projects going back to banners the way we used to do them to connect uptown Culver with downtown Culver. We're also talking about looking at maybe adding some big planter plots. So we're gathering pricing on that, and probably we'll go before redevelopment commission to see if they'll support that project for merchants. And the whole idea is just to ensure that we're connecting our two sort of downtown areas in a more visual kind of way. I will also talk to Bob. We may, I don't know if you guys remember, some years ago before a lot of our trail projects came along, we had some directional signs on the street up at the corner of Main and Main, directing people to downtown, directing people to Culver academies, et cetera. The merchants have expressed an interest to bring those back. Sometimes those signs get pulled during construction and they never get put back. So we'll look at working with Bob to order some of those. And MACOG is coming to our next meeting on the pit so that we're getting feedback for that comp plan from our local merchants. Yeah, we're keeping MACOG really busy these days. So, but they've been great to work with us. I've got a special event permit for the Adaptive Water Ski Clinic. This is the one we've done every year with RHI sports programs. They get their special permit pretty early, and this is so that people who are wheelchair-bound or have ADA challenges can get out on our lake with this volunteer group. That event is July twelfth and thirteenth. There's no special requirements like alcohol in the park or anything like that. I'm just looking to get a motion to approve and let them calendar that date. The only way this affects the town in the fall is we do close off the courtesy pier when they're there, but that's because they're dropping and picking up participants.
And Jeff, you've looked at this. You've seen it.
And this includes, excuse me, using the West Pavilion?
Yes. East Pavilion and then the yeah, East Pavilion, if it rains, they use the beach lodge, but yeah, and then closing off the courtesy here.
And we're waiting for that.
Yes, yeah, we are. And there'll be EMS personnel and a nurse on site for that event.
Is there a motion to approve the Adaptive Water Ski Clinic on July twelfth and thirteenth?
So moved.
Twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the Adaptive Water Ski Clinic. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Under ready grants, we had a meeting with Taryn McFarlane regarding submittal of the next documents, and that basically includes the budget that I told you guys about. They also went over with us several of the federal requirements for that. This is gonna work a lot like the Oprah grants work. I believe that each, each line item that has ready dollars applied to it, so if we do sewer lines, water lines with ready grant dollars, we will have to go through the procurement process that's part of the federal grant. I noticed on the budget sheet that they gave us, it's categorized and broken out in sections just like an Oprah grant. So there's environmental, there's engineering, professional services, there's grant administration. So right now, we're working with the developer to create where his private investment goes, where our public match dollars from redevelopment go, and where ready dollars go. We will have to get that submitted to the RDA in the coming couple of weeks. I had suggested our last meeting that we look at potentially hiring a grant administrator to oversee that process because it'll be as complicated as your typical federal grant. Reached out to Shannon McLeod. She's definitely interested. She's currently doing one of these for Henry County and admits that it's much like an Oprah grant in terms of what the requirements will be. So I will get a proposal from her. If we want to pay her with ready grant dollars or local match dollars, we'll have to determine that at some point. If we use local match dollars, we don't have to go through permit, but if we use ready dollars, we would have to. And I think redevelopment will want to use their local match dollars. Now, we want to get the best grant administrator on there. And I think what we'll probably do is focus most of those ready dollars on utilities per our agreement with redevelopment. They're pretty flexible about where you can apply those to infrastructure, utilities, amenities can also fall under that. But there's, there's not gonna be enough dollars to stretch that far. So anyway, that's what we're working on. Taryn will be in Plymouth on December seventh, so if we don't have ours complete by then, she was willing to meet with us and go over the documents, but with my certification background, I'm pretty comfortable with where we're at. Annexation of Tamarack Road. Burke has submitted paperwork to Jim, and he'll update you under the attorney report for that.
I should want me to do that now?
Yeah, go for it, because I'm at the end.
The petition for annexation for that Beachview Properties LLC down there by Tamarack. I've reached out to Burke to see if he would tweak that petition. There's a couple things that I would like to see included in the petition, and then also this, these things have to be done in a timely fashion, and I've asked him, and I suggested we get a timetable so that we, once he files a petition, we, you know, have in place when we're gonna have public hearing, when we're gonna have approval, you know, looking at the ordinance. So I'll probably be in touch with you, Bill, on that part of it.
Do we have to have a fiscal management?
Yeah, I think we still do, and I want to check with Burke on that, but, but because of
The one we did in eighteen?
Yeah, the way we're tying this in, I, I think that, you know, we can, we can save ourselves some expense of having a separate kind of a fiscal management thing.
Should some of the, should some of this follow along what went on at Sentinel Park, or is it that totally different?
Well, that's the Dunes Housing that's gonna be similar to, but
This is for the executive
This is for the storage units, yes.
It's directly across from Tim Howard.
The Dunes is in the town.
Right.
That, all that property.
This is not
This is outside, so they've got to annex it in.
Got it.
I looked at the two thousand eighteen fiscal management plan that we did when we did the paddocks. And since then, our census, our populations declined pretty significantly. And then we also added some full-time positions to emergency services, so I'm assuming I should include that in the next fiscal plan.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll get with you on that. The emergency services, you know, that's kind of an easy thing to to figure out. I mean, just cause those people to run a little farther, but yeah, the water and sewer thing, it's gonna be tied to the other, so.
Okay.
You also, and back to the Dunes project, you saying to report that the developer is working on refining the site plan that will go to, and also that the public hearings related to that through the BZA.
The public hearings that will first probably get to first are with establishing the TIF area. He will have to decide with the site plan if he's going to rezone, or currently, all that property is zoned R2. But currently, he can build just about every housing type is in R2. But if he wants to do it as a PUD or anything else, he'd have to come before the plan commission. And right now, I don't know what his plan is other than he's, they've got a site plan that they've been working on, and I think it's getting close to where he's we had talked to him about having MACOG come in and do a transportation study because we have the intersection there next to the water plant at Davis Street and Main Street, and you've got traffic coming down Ohio that enters to go south, you've got southbound going north, and then you've got, so you've got three different flows of vehicles, and in our comp plan from two thousand fourteen, we show that potentially becoming a roundabout, which would involve acquiring property ways furthest north property, if we were to do something like that. We've also had a few people give us feedback about potentially adding access to seventeen, the highway. Do you want that going through a neighborhood, you know, that sort of thing? So we want to have MACOG take a look and do like a transportation study of that whole area. And that would impact on whether or not we do a roundabout, or we put access to the highway, and that would change his site plan to some degree. So currently, we don't hit, the property behind him, between him and the highway, is not owned by the LLC or Wade McGee. So we would end up having to get easements worked out. I think that's owned by ACPI. So that's another issue to look at for me to give us some input on that. Right now, people go further south to take their boats out to seventeen, and you know, people are coming in, is it off of Tamarack and nineteen? So if you were to leave that development and go south, you get to the highway that way, you go north, you're coming into town. And right now, we have traffic that comes into town with boats. We have traffic that goes south with boats, so we'll have MACOG get with us on doing some sort of transportation analysis.
The initial public hearing will probably be related to this.
Yes, unless he does this as a PUD, they would be filing to do a PUD. You have to go through application online, come in. That has a, that also goes from plan commission to town council. You have to go through TRC before you start all of that. So it kind of depends on that site plan and what he's trying to accomplish with how it's currently zoned versus how it could be zoned.
Good. Is that it?
Yes.
Moving on. Department head reports. EMS? Fire. Terry, are you on?
Yeah, I'm on. I want to give you a little bit of update on the ladder truck. The last time I left you guys, it was out of service and went to St. Louis. In St. Louis, they couldn't fix the truck, so they took the truck to Nebraska, and at the time right now, the truck is being put back together. And hopefully, we see it before the end of the year. I can't guarantee, they can't guarantee us anything on that, but as soon as they get it back, we'll have it back in service, and I'll keep you abreast of any changes. I also, since then, we had our appreciation dinner at the Culver Cove. I want to thank Rich and Karen for coming to help, to help serve, help to set up, did a lot of work. It was very successful in my eyes, not as many as people like always say that are gonna go, go, but we had, I'd say, ten people past fire service that showed up, and I believe they all had a good time. So we would like to try to have this as an annual thing or biannual thing. So we would like to try to have this as an annual thing or biannual thing to, uh, get these people that were on, that served to, uh, you know, just appreciate their time and their donation from the past. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Terry. Please. Well, just that one day, I brought back the update on those days that I talked to you about last meeting. I have a total of fifty-two shifts. Uh, plus, my, it's a couple, maybe five more. Right, have the one approved that tonight or stood tonight?
Yeah. The motion?
I make the motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve payment for those fifty-two shifts. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Sure. Amber?
I just need approval, um, for the, um, park light, garland and wreath, um, installation and removal with seller services. Um, I sent that to you all via email. Um, the quote came in for three thou- four thousand three hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy-five cents.
Do you know what the budget for that?
Yeah, I mean, it was at last year's three thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars, seventy-five cents. It's just three hundred seventy-five difference, but.
Yeah, that was in your email. Is there a motion to approve the, uh, park lighting, Christmas park lighting?
I move to approve the Christmas lighting in the park.
The second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the Christmas park lighting, the amount of four thousand three hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign. Motion carries. Bob, are you on for utilities?
I am, I have nothing for you, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Boards and commissions. Anyone on line for plan commission? BZA?
No, I don't think we'll have that.
Okay.
I pretty much filled you on what's going on.
Recommission, don't see anybody for that. First report.
I have a bunch of stuff, so I apologize. Second frequent project, um, Thomas Excavating is having trouble getting their SAMs number, which is something they have to have in order to get, you know, trust. There's, they should have it renewed, um, in order to get the Oprah funds reimbursed. Um, I know a lot of municipalities are having trouble renewing too, so they're not alone. Um, thankfully Shannon did ours, so I'm happy with that. Um, but.
So it goes through her, she'll?
Well, our, the town's taken care of.
Okay.
But, um, so I received a payment application, number three, from Troy, uh, through Troy group for sixty-four thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars and six cents. We've already paid out two of those payouts, but we haven't been reimbursed yet. Um, so what I'm proposing is if you would go ahead and approve payment of that, I will hold the check until they receive their SAMs number. We're hoping they're going to get it soon. Um, but that way, we can, we can get them paid as soon as they get their SAMs number. We don't have to wait for another council meeting, um, because they've already done the work. But we're just, you know, we're kind of holding on for reimbursement.
The dollar amount again was sixty-four?
Sixty-four thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars and six cents.
Six cents, okay. Is there a motion?
I move, I move that we approve the payment to Thomas Excavating on the condition that they get their SAMs. Um, certification or number.
The second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve in advance pending, uh, Thomas Excavating getting their SAMs number in the amount of sixty-four thousand nine sixty-five oh six for working the park. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All right, the second thing is, um, additional appropriations. There will be a public hearing at the December thirteenth meeting. I did, um, since I had a little bit of time and, and Bob came in and, uh, reminded me that we purchased that dump truck earlier in the year and he's running low. Um, I added twenty thousand dollars to the street department. Even, he may or may not need that, but it will help me sleep better at night, knowing that I don't have to find the money from some other, um, some other budget. So, um, I've gone ahead, uh, the advertisements are in, the, the, the thing is posted already. So just wanted to let you know that there had been a little bit of a change. Um, the copier purchase, I'd sent out, uh, some proposals on, on a copy. Did anybody have any feedback on that or any opinion?
Would say you go with what you.
Okay.
Go with the best, anybody else kind of comments?
Uh, yeah, whatever hits the functionality for you.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, well, I'm going to. Well, will you just make a motion so I can make that sit?
Who's your preferred vendor or brand? You know what?
Well, there's one company that has some other, um, some other departments within it that I think would be beneficial for the town to engage in. Uh, like telephone systems, um, they do have some IT support, which I'm very happy with the group that we have right now. Um, but in the future, if we wanted to, you know, take a look at other opportunities, that might be one to look at. Um, and I'm kind of leaning, I'm kind of leaning towards that Rico, um, copier. So, which was kind of, it wasn't the lowest one, but it was a reasonable price and, um, it had a fairly low maintenance.
What, what copier was Rico?
Rico.
R I C O H.
Rico.
Motion to approve the purchase of Rico copier.
The second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to allow Karen to purchase the Rico copier. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign, motion carries.
Get that in soon, get rid of the ones on the.
As I was saying, maybe you'll get reports without line.
Is that one of the ones that had to move?
I don't remember.
Yes, sir.
The, the town manager, Ms.?
Well, I'm getting, I'm getting there, previous, well, it was previously, you talking about the fearless one?
Surf contract.
Surf.
Oh, surf, no, she's not there yet.
No, I, uh, we don't really have a status change for it. The RFP that Surf submitted is, um, Bill and Jim are going to review it. We're going to meet after Thanksgiving. So we're getting, yeah, I reported that at the last meeting. Now, we did have a meeting with Surf and started working out schedule with them and how things will work. So we're looking at, um, late February, uh, when they can start doing work and with a focus on getting, uh, the downtown business areas, uh, done first, uh, and then working our way out from there.
Good, then, can you couple that with what's going on with the shack or the building up by the?
Talking about the hub?
Oh, the fiber hut, yeah.
Fiber hut.
Yeah, their plan is to be done with that in May. So that would be the soonest that all of the lines Surf is installing would get hooked up. So even if, if Surf gets done sooner until that fiber hut is built and ready to go.
Okay.
We won't be able to flip the switch.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so hopefully Fiber Hut and the installed lines will kind of happen in the same timeframe.
Thank you.
So the twenty twenty-three budget, uh, I got a email from our DLGF rep, Wayne Hudson, who, in my opinion, is fantastic. Um, he brought my attention an issue with the adopted budget, this tax rate. I think I explained this to you all in an email that the tax rate for the CCD run, the fund was too low. So we would have only gotten about eight thousand dollars as opposed to the eighty-nine thousand dollars that we, um, had, had budgeted for. So, um, there's a process to fix it. And, um, so Wayne explained that to me. It basically involves an advertisement which has been taken care of. I will go in and fix the, the rate. Um, and you all will need to meet December sixth at six thirty. You'll rescind the adoption of the twenty twenty-three budget and then adopt the, this budget with the new rate. And that'll be the extent of the meeting, so it should take you ten minutes. Well, I apologize for calling you in in my week of bliss, um, with an extra week in between council meetings, but, um, that'll get things done. Um, the website, uh, when I was down at the AIM conference, down at French Lake, um, I met with one of the representatives from the Indiana Office of Technology. And maybe build it as well. Um, they have a program that, where the Office of Technology will host websites for municipalities. Um, it, the cost starts at fifty dollars a month and goes up depending on what all you want. Um, but basically it would give us, we can keep our town of Culver dot org, um, address, but also have a town of Culver dot IN dot gov. Um, they also have some support as far as design work. They would help us transfer the site over, um, reconfigure it a little bit. So it kind of looks like the state of Indiana template. Um, but it would also offer some support that I really don't have right now because it's, you know, I can make basic changes to the website, but I don't have anyone that can go in and, and fix some of the things that need to be done. Um, so I have a call with them on the twenty-ninth of, of November, and I will share the information that they provide to me. It's with the Indiana Office of Technology. It's a, a, a state, one of the departments of the state of Indiana. Um, yeah.
They, they do this service for a lot of other smaller communities.
Works as good for.
Yeah, it.
It works as good for the municipalities as Evergreen does for the library.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Yeah.
They, they did a fantastic job on their, uh.
Good.
Is the board down there?
Does our, I'll follow that email?
No, no, it, we could. Um, and that's a whole nother, um, conversation for another time. Because I'm not sure, because that would involve us changing to a Google platform. Um, and some intricacies that I'm not quite prepared to.
Okay, with potential.
Infer into, so yes. So Jeff and I have talked a little bit about it, but not in great detail, so.
So your conversation could be by phone, I thought they were going to come up here.
No, we're having a Zoom call.
Okay, all right.
Um, okay, I'll have three more things. Bear with me, uh, utility write-offs. So we have about one thousand one hundred thirty-five dollars and forty-four cents in uncollected or ongoing uncollected utility bills. Um, these are for people that moved out of town without leaving a forwarding address. And we didn't catch that they were moving until, you know, a couple of weeks later, didn't get a forwarding address or, um, the property had a balance on it and was sold to a new group and we weren't able to get a lien on it in time. Um, we are pretty on top of getting liens filed as much as possible. Uh, but sometimes people just, you know, catch everything. Um, so I will tell you that the last time I asked for a write-off was in twenty twenty-one and that total was two thousand one hundred nineteen dollars and eighty-six cents. So Julie's staying on top of things, she fights it every day. Um, so if I could get a motion to, uh, write the, those amounts off, um, I think you'll have a list of the specific accounts.
There a motion to do the utility write-offs for twenty twenty-two in the amount of one thousand one hundred thirty-five dollars and forty-four cents?
Second.
Most have been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Yeah, that is a reduction of a thousand dollars, so it's good.
So, but along those lines, uh, the Indiana Association of Counties has a municipal trust. And please don't ask me what that stands for, but I provided information to you previously. Um, but this would be a program that we could sign up for. Um, we would have to update them, um, basically every Friday with a report as far as if we have outstanding balances on anyone. They search out, uh, income tax reference. And before someone get, if somebody has a balance on their, in their system, um, before someone would get their tax return.
This would grab, this would grab the funds.
This is only for Indiana residents.
Just for Indiana resident, yeah, so if he's, this day, we're kind of.
There's a fee for that too.
Well, it goes to the, um, it's not for us, the, the payer pays it.
But also the property owner is not, is not an Indiana resident.
Well, it goes, it's, it's not necessarily the property owner, it's the utility, um, the person that's using the utility. So, which kind of helps because you can't anymore ever since, what was it, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two? When the legislature changed the law.
Right.
So we can't collect water payments from a landlord. Um, this helps, um, also that situation. So if you are all inclined, I would like to move forward and enter into an MOU and I would provide that to you before the next meeting, so you could review and hopefully approve, and we could get moving on that.
I don't have a problem with that, if they may.
No, it's fine. Anything else?
Anything else to get money in there?
Okay, and my final thing is, um, board and commission openings. Uh, we have been, coming up on the end of the year, there's a lot of changeover. Um, we have one plan commission seat with open, which is appointed by the council president. There are three seats on the BZA. Uh, one is appointed by the council president, one appointed by the council president from the plan, that, from a member of the plan commission. And then one is appointed by the plan commission to BZA. There are five redevelopment commission members open, those change over, those are just a one-year term. Um, there's two positions open on the tree commission and the town appointment to the library board is, is open. And by open, I just say the term is ending. Um, so what we've done in the past is ask people to fill out an application, um, which is on our website and submit those by a deadline. And I would propose December thirtieth, um, so that you can have time to review them and then make appointments at your first meeting in January. And so that everyone's in place by each of those.
The tenth?
Yes. Yes.
Before plan commission and BZA.
Third week, the third week of the month is typically.
Plan commission is the seventeenth and BZA is the nineteenth.
Do you want a motion to?
You know, if you, I mean, if you're okay with the December thirty, thirtieth, I will get the.
That's what I recommended to her the other day, and I thought.
That's fine.
Okay.
Keep that.
I will get that information now on the website and town on the lake and.
These other ones that you mentioned, which I thought it's in reports on the BZA.
It's normally a twenty, down that here, but you can see me to serve as with, you know, most of those appointments, if they're not appointment, they just continue to serve. So I didn't know if you wanted to put something out on that or, um, I looked back at the minutes and didn't see, we had appointed anybody.
Reappointed or confirm that appointment, we should probably ask him if he still wants to.
Oh, sure.
That's all.
Bernie's report. Um, I worked in what I was going to say with the town manager report, so I have nothing for you this evening.
Is there anyone present for utility shut-off or ordinance violation at this time? Those present to dispute the utility shut-off or ordinance violation, may address the council. Anyone in the room for that? Moving on. Citizen input, is there anyone online for citizen input?
Yes, this is Alexa Gardner. Uh, good evening, uh, my address is five thirteen Academy Road. And I wanted to, uh, reach out regarding the Surf contract. Um, I'm the IT director at Culver Academies and we have used, uh, Surf, uh, Surf Wireless for a long time, over twenty years, uh, for our internet connection. And I wanted to open, you know, the lines of communication and, um, and say, you know, please feel free to reach out to me, um, to collaborate on this project in any way. Um, and I wanted to thank you for all the work that you're putting into it because it'll be great for our community.
Thank you, Alexa.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll, I'll drop you an email, Alexa.
Sounds good, thank you.
Anyone else online for citizen input?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, this is Terry Wakefield. Hey, I just want to, uh, I, I want to thank you guys for hiring Jerry Seiler. He's a good guy, he had to go do wonders for the town. I, I got a question about how, when Jerry is on city time and the fire whistle blows, I think we're going to have to work that out. I think there's an ordinance, I, we talked about this years ago, how this is going to work. I just want to make sure that it's all clear.
Terry, it's in the.
You hear that, Terry?
No, can you repeat it, please?
Terry, it's in the salary ordinance. And it says that Jerry will stay as, when he's working, he gets called, if I remember correctly, if he's working and he gets called to a fire. And it says that Jerry will stay as, when he's working, he gets called, if I remember correctly, if he's working and he gets called to a fire, he's allowed to go and he'll just continue on the clock on town time. And then he's still um, eligible for the, the pay for fire.
Okay. All right. That's what I needed. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else online for citizen input? Anyone in the room for citizen input?
There is one person online that unmuted, but um, it might be a phone number that I'm not sure. It's the phone ending in seven, seven, eight, zero.
Okay, let's move on. No one in the room for citizen input? Council issues.
William?
I have none.
Nope.
Nothing.
Rich?
Nothing.
I have nothing. You have anything else?
No.
Is there a motion to adjourn the claims?
Hello?
Second.
Favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. We're done.